Okay, please join us for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A real call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda, are there any deletions, additions, or changes? We do have one addition, and that would be under Mayor Council Matters, a discussion of AB 2657. Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tim O'Connell wanted to have a discussion on that. And then we'll have a discussion of a written response also. Any others?
I probably want to have just note to report out from the legal counsel in a closed session.
Yeah, we'll report out after we adopt the agenda.
Right.
So do I have a motion for adoption?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, legal counsel, you want to report out from closed session, please?
Mayor and council, there were three closed session items on tonight. The first was conference with real property negotiator APNs 007-570-130 and 007-481-040. Direction was given, no action was taken in that matter. Item number two was conference with legal counsel regarding one case of potential litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 6.9. In that matter, direction was given, no action was taken. The final matter was a liability claim, and in that matter, action was taken, the claim was denied. That was the claim of Kerry Bessler, actually the claims of Kerry Bessler and State Farm Insurance, and again, action was taken in that matter, and that concludes the closed session report.
Okay, very good. Next item we have is a presentation, and this is Brisbane Village, Lots of Helping Hands, and Nancy Coleman.
This is Cindy Rudolph, and we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to let you know what those of us who've been working on the village have been up to. I know you've been provided with materials in your packets, so we'll try and be brief and leave time at the end for any questions you might have, just hit the high points. For those of you and members of the audience who don't, weren't familiar with the village movement, villages are community organizations that coordinate or facilitate access to supportive services provided by volunteers or other providers to promote aging in place and well-being for older community members. There are over 100 villages operating all over the country, and they generally provide services like rides to the doctor, the grocery store, minor home repairs, and friendly visits. So why do we want to start a village in Brisbane? According to the 2010 census, four years ago, there were 429 Brisbane residents, 65 or older, 122 of whom live alone, or at that time, lived alone. As of four years ago, there were 1,459 residents aged 45 to 64, and those people are now 49 to 68. So like many places, Brisbane has a population that is graying. For older residents who might be unable to drive, or might have difficulty with household tasks like changing a light bulb, and might not have close family or friends who they can consistently rely on for help, living independently in Brisbane can be challenging. So Brisbane has always been a small town where neighbors help each other, and in keeping with this spirit, the village can provide a way to match older residents who need assistance with their neighbors here in town who are willing to help volunteer. In May 2013, about a year ago, about 50 community members gathered in this room to learn about the village movement. We discussed the possibility of starting a village here in Brisbane to help serve the needs of older residents now and in the future, and at that meeting, a smaller group formed to move this project forward. The groups compiled a summary of resources currently available to older Brisbane residents to avoid duplicating efforts. We met with leaders of community agents, county agencies, excuse me, concerned with issues relating to aging, and we researched existing villages and talked with members of existing villages in the Bay Area. And I'm going to turn it over to Cindy right now.
After looking at several volunteer-run villages, the group felt that at this time in Brisbane, we don't have the financial or human resources to take on the formation of a nonprofit organization with a staff and office expenses that would be supported by membership dues and fundraising. So we came up with a simpler, essentially cost-free alternative that would stay true to the mission of helping older residents stay in their homes and connected to the community as long as possible. In this alternative model, we will form an online volunteer community, which we're calling Brisbane Village Lots of Helping Hands, using the free Lots of Helping Hands website, which is set up to facilitate both private and community-based volunteer groups. Here's how it works in a nutshell. Through this website, village coordinators will match volunteers with members 55 and older who request services via email to the site, or if the member does not have internet access, with the help of a volunteer who is their internet buddy. Once the request is made, if it is appropriate, it will be posted on the website's calendar, and an email will be sent out to people who have volunteered to provide that service describing the request. Volunteers respond via email if they can fulfill the service request, and are put in touch with the person requesting the service to make the arrangements. Brisbane Village Lots of Helping Hands will be open only to Brisbane residents. The village will allow those without internet access to post requests for assistance via internet buddies with whom they will be matched. The village will request background, will require background checks for all volunteer service providers for safety reasons, but it is important to understand that all community members will be volunteering and accepting volunteer help at their own risk. The village will offer opportunities for social interaction through potluck gatherings. There will also be a community message board on the website. In February of this year, we presented our proposal for creating Brisbane Village Lots of Helping Hands at a community meeting of about 35 residents. The response was overwhelmingly positive. About 40 Brisbane residents have already indicated their interest in becoming village volunteers. Many policies and procedures are in place, and we're setting up our Lots of Helping Hands website. We hope that sometime this fall, we'll be ready to start offering services and begin our outreach efforts to ensure that older Brisbane residents know about the village and are able to access volunteer services either online or through an internet buddy. Can we answer any questions?
Council questions. Ray, go ahead.
I just have a couple to start off. I know that the Lions have been sort of active in this area for years, and I know that some of their members, I know in particular Linda Detmer, has been pursuing this public service. And I'm wondering how connected you have been with them, and how you coordinate with their activities, and how there have been meals provided, sometimes at a location, and sometimes individual homes, you know, which is kind of the sort of thing that you might end up doing, or at least coordinating with county agencies that provide that service. So I guess I'm sort of curious about where your thinking is on that whole coordination, collaboration realm.
We've been in contact with the Lions, you know, throughout this, and people from Lions Club have come to meetings, and we certainly don't want to duplicate what they're doing, and we want to coordinate with them. We think that the services that we're offering, some of them are similar, I mean, they've been doing Project Louisa, helping people with home repair, and, but my understanding is that they felt that that was very underutilized, and we were hoping that maybe that would be mutually beneficial, that somehow we could reach out to people, and the people who have been volunteering through the Lions could, you know, we could do this in coordination somehow. I mean, meals are not something that we have really talked about as a major service that we would be offering, so, you know, surely we would be in contact with them. And we're hoping, we're hoping to coordinate with them, and we're hoping that even, you know, possibly we could, well, this is, you know, we're hoping because we're not a nonprofit, we're not planning to start a nonprofit ourselves, that maybe we could even come under their wing at some point, maybe, but that's something that hasn't really been discussed with them in any formal way, although it's been brought up at meetings that Lions members have been at.
And then the issue of coordinating with county services, we've done research on that, and we'll be posting that information on our website, and certainly, you know, training our volunteers on what else is available, and if need be, working to connect people with other services, yes.
One thing that we did, we did go talk with the head of Aging and Adult Services in Redwood City, sorry, they have Redwood City, anyway, and one thing that they felt when they looked, when they were talking to us, is that they feel Brisbane as an area that's very underserved by their services. So they're hoping that if we get started, that we can actually let people know, you know, we can be useful to them in terms of letting people know what they offer.
Yeah, you wouldn't know in this modern day, but they still consider Brisbane as far away from Redwood City. Yeah, so it has an effect in service.
Yeah, but they're very, but they want to, you know, they want to connect with people in Brisbane, and I think they were really happy.
Somehow or other, that the distance has its impact.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wanted to ask one other question. Later on, the agenda is a request for a cosponsorship relationship with the city, and I was wondering if you all would talk about that and what you had in mind, and then I wanted to ask our staff, what liabilities would that imply if the city were to be cosponsor of this? Because there's some statements here about liability, I know, you know the legal side, Nancy, but I would just want to make clear, you know, what all that would entail, so we're clear what we're doing.
Well, I think the cosponsorship that we're talking about is fairly limited. I mean, really, there's the area of use of facilities for public meetings or events. I mean, like, we've been meeting informally in the conference room at City Hall, to be able to do things like that, if we had a kickoff event, to be able to use a public facility without having to pay for it. So that's one thing. Some, I think, some help with things like printing up a brochure, copying, photocopying, things like that. And then a small budget for things like maybe one mailing, one yearly citywide mailing, things like that. So we're not talking about the city being involved in the provision of services, really, it's just sort of helping out this organization that really, so that we, you know, we don't, we don't really have, our intention is not to have to do a lot of fundraising, we feel like we don't really have the resources to do that. In terms of liability, I, you know, I don't want to give, I'm not going to give you a legal opinion about it, but we, this is, liability is a concern of ours, we really feel like, you know, it's unlikely that it's going to come up, but it could come up. And, you know, short of forming our own nonprofit, there's no guarantee that we, that people wouldn't be sued, which is why we like to explore things like finding another nonprofit who would take us on as a project, and that's something that we intend to pursue in the future. We're not really talking about beginning to offer services until sometime in the fall, would be our hope. So right now, we're talking about, you know, some support to sort of get us in a position where we can get going, and hopefully, part of that will be, you know, figuring out how we're going to deal with the liability issue.
Could I ask the staff to respond to the whole liability issue?
I spoke, oops.
It's on.
I need to take a look at our sponsorship agreement to see if there's anything there that would be helpful or directly on point, but I believe based on the way that we sponsor, we cosponsor, what we're doing is we're allowing use of our facilities with a waiver of the facility fee, which is what we do for a number of our community organizations, the liability really is no different than what we have for any member of the public that uses our facilities. It just means that there's no separate insurance requirement, and I don't see that as a significant liability issue. The other liability issue is what happens if, in the course of either one of the volunteers providing services, or one of volunteers in somebody's house, if there's some incident that one or the other thinks is problematic. My understanding is that there's going to be a waiver that's going to be signed by both the volunteers and by the individuals who are receiving the assistance. That certainly will be, will be helpful. A waiver unfortunately is no guarantee that if there's something that happens, that there won't be a claim filed, and because the city is the entity that generally has the deep pocket, it's often named in these types of lawsuits, I think that the scope of the city's involvement is very minimal, and, I mean, we would certainly defend, and I think most likely prevail in any claim, but in terms of being a possibility, it's always a possibility, but I think the risk again is fairly minimal, given the type of involvement that we have.
Okay, thank you. And the third thing I'd just like to say is that it's really very heartwarming that you're, you know, stepping up to the plate and offering to do this kind of community service, and so I think it's great, and I think it will be very well-received, and there's certainly a need there that, as you know, that more and more people are getting up in the years, and they're lasting for quite a while, and, you know, things just don't, particularly when people are living alone, as you pointed out before, it's hard to get things done. And if neighbors and work, and neighbors in an organized way are, you know, willing to help them deal with those situations, I think that's really a wonderful community spirit that you're demonstrating, so I think it's a very positive thing. But in our due diligence role as council members, we have to look at all the other divisions too, but I think it's really a great idea, and appreciate you doing it. Lori.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ray.
So I agree, thank you for bringing, you know, this forward and for taking this on. I think, you know, especially given the number of aging residents in our community, based on the census, you know, it shows that we're going to have a large aging population, and, you know, I would imagine that a number of those people would want to stay in their homes as much as possible, sort of the spirit of independence of Brisbane. So I think if we can help them in any ways to do that, it would certainly be, you know, a noble thing. So I did have a few questions. So you mentioned in your presentation that there would be a background check for the volunteers, but I'm wondering what about for the recipients of the services? Because I can imagine if I was going to go into somebody's home, you know, I would want to, who I don't know, I would want to, you know, make sure that potentially that they were background checked as well. Is this an issue that may have come up?
It's an issue we've discussed quite a bit, actually. We've had, you want to talk about it? Yes, we've had a lot of back and forth on it, but basically, what decided was, we didn't want to alienate potential members of the community who needed services and maybe couldn't afford background checks, and none of the other, in all of the other models, none of them are doing background checks on the members, the people whose homes we would be going into, and didn't feel they were necessary either. Is that correct?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, it's interesting, I mean, we asked this question, but when I talked to other people in other villages about whether they required background checks of members, if that's something they had considered, they all acted like really surprised. They hadn't even thought of it, and they thought it would have been very alienating to say to people, "Oh yeah, and by the way, if you want people to come and do these things in your house, you need to, you know, we need to do your criminal background check," or whatever, you know, so I think on balance, we all felt like that we would not do that.
Okay, and who pays for the background checks for the volunteers?
The individual themselves. We hope to do a little bit of fundraising, we won't do a lot, so if someone were not able to pay for it, that would not exclude them from being able to volunteer.
Okay, thank you.
We're talking about like $40, and that would be the only cost associated with this, which by the way, is super unusual, I mean, all the other villages have dues, I haven't, this is the only one I've ever seen that doesn't have dues.
So have you looked at any other communities that use this alternative model? Where do you come up with this idea?
Well, we, actually, we came up with it really ourselves, I mean, based, kind of starting out looking at other models, and feeling like it was, given the number of people who were working on it, and what kind of time people had, that we really didn't, we really didn't feel like we could go about forming our own nonprofit, or, you know, doing all, doing all this fundraising, and that, and people within the group did some research and found this Lots of Helping Hands website, which actually, we knew individuals who had used it for, it's, I think, was originally set up for like someone who has a relative or close person in their family who's ill, and they respite care, and/or rides, things like that, that's what it was set up for, but this website has a community organization function as well, and it's totally free, and the people, they're very accessible, I mean, it's really amazing. I mean, I said to these people, "How do you do this?" And they, I think they do it, they sell their, like if something like the American Cancer Society wants to use their website, they've charged them, I think that's how they support themselves, but for some organizations like us, it's nothing, so, and they're very helpful, and so we felt like, you know, since we were looking at all volunteer-run models anyway, if we did something like this, we could do it essentially for no cost, which seemed to be more in keeping with the feedback we were getting at the public meetings.
Okay.
The potential volunteers were not at all enthusiastic about having to pay a yearly membership fee, not at all. We would definitely have lost volunteers, I think, if we required that.
Okay, and is there a minimum age for volunteers, and do they have to be Brisbane residents?
I think everybody has to be Brisbane residents, but there's a minimum age for receiving services.
Right.
55 and older, and then for volunteers, there is not, there's a, 18.
18, okay.
They have to be adults.
Okay, all right. And then for the, we talked, you talked briefly earlier about the possibly approaching the Lions Club to see if they would take you under for donations, that's an idea I had thought of as well, and I know the Lions has done that for other fundraising efforts, and also that I believe the city has been a recipient in other circumstances for, for example, for the playground and the community park for that fundraising effort, and I was wondering if that might be something that the city might be willing to consider. Not that it has to, but I just wanted to put that idea out there.
Probably you should be looking down the line there.
Okay.
I do think that that's probably something that, you know, I mean, when you start, the further we get involved with the group, the more this liability issue starts to come to play, so I think we need to be careful about that part.
Okay, sure. And then regarding the liability, you had mentioned that both parties, the volunteer and the members, would sign a waiver, and it might be a good idea, as our city attorney was speaking, I was thinking it might be a good idea to put in the waiver not only that they release liability of each other, but also of the city, you know, so that if in the future they ever look to the city for any litigation, that it's in there, that the city's released.
Councilmember Lou, that's an interesting idea, we probably want to think about that a little bit, because currently, the relationship is between the volunteer and the person receiving services, if we put the city in there as a releasing party, then that also has the flip side of allowing someone to argue that the city is involved in the transaction because we're waiving that, so we want to be careful about that.
Okay, all right. Those were all my questions, thank you.
Cliff?
Thank you for coming together. And you've been awesome, you've never, and, you know, as I was reading this, I was not just thinking about Brisbane, but just, you know, neighborhoods and cities all across the county, and, you know, I think Brisbane is the perfect place to kind of start something that, you know, that reaches out to folks, but doing it in a way, oh, sorry.
Doing it in a way that it doesn't cost any money, you know, I mean, I think if you can be successful with this model, it can be just a great example, not only to, you know, throughout the county, but the state as well. And you talked about the nonprofit status, that you're not pursuing that right now, and I was hoping you could talk a little bit about that, because, you know, like when you're a nonprofit, you have a board, and you have folks that kind of are running the show, and here, it sounds, it's kind of loose, and so if you could address that.
I'll give a short answer, we just didn't have the support, it's very time-consuming to do that, and when we started looking at it, people kind of started dropping by the wayside, so I just don't think we have the support to do something that extensive. And that's basically why we tried this, why we're that's basically why we tried this, why we're pursuing this other model.
Okay, so, so to be a nonprofit, to be registered as a nonprofit, that there's, of course, there's a time commitment, but you guys are already kind of putting in some time, what is, are there costs also involved?
There are costs for filing, there's reporting requirements that, you know, there's bookkeeping, there's a lot of stuff that has to be done on an ongoing basis, and we just didn't feel like we had the resources to do that at this point. Now, if this really takes off, if people really feel, you know, if it ends up working for people, then maybe eventually support for it will grow, and we could eventually become a non, our own nonprofit, but at this point, it was either a question of doing it or not doing it, you know, on the scaledown model.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, you know, I totally support you guys and what you're doing, and, yeah, I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that it is successful, and that you get the volunteers that you need, and, yeah, that people sign up for getting those services too. Thank you.
Terry.
I think it's great what you're doing, I think that this idea is formalizing something that so many of us in Brisbane do now with our neighbors, or people that we know need a helping hand for small items, or for, you know, company and access to the things they need in their daily lives, so I think that's great. I understand why you need to keep it semi informal, because of the amount of time having sat on several nonprofit boards, it is work just to keep them afloat and keep interest going, and it's a time commitment that so many people don't have, where they can give a half an hour here or there, but they don't want to, or about something that's, that's going to take away time from actually doing the services you're trying to accomplish. So I think this is a very good, basic starting plan. I, the only thing I see an issue with certainly is getting the word out electronically, not to your volunteers, but to the people needing the services, just like the county says, they don't, people don't know what's out there, so they don't know how to apply, and they don't know how to get that help, and so they're reaching out to people, and I think it's more on the one-on-one, when you see a neighbor and letting them know about the service, and I think that the city could help with that kind of outreach for you without becoming involved in the project itself, but with some support off, off on the side, or peripheral support for your group, and I really applaud the work that you're doing on it.
Thanks, we, I think we really do, we, we all agree with you, that that's going to be the biggest challenge, is getting the word out to people, and getting people to trust that this is something that they can take advantage of comfortably, and, but we feel like we wanted to have the pieces kind of in place before we went out to people, because, you know, it seemed like to go out to people and say, "Well, we're not going to have this for four or five months," wouldn't be optimal, so, yeah, that's, we're definitely looking at that, and we're going to be spending a lot of energy on that in the future.
Great, this is, sounds like it's going to be a wonderful program, you know, and hopefully get some of our young adults involved in helping some of the, some of us older folks nowadays, so, I mean, it's a good way to do it, you know, to really kind of make the community interconnect. I just had one question, the council had a lot of great, great feedback and questions, so, mine was actually on your presentation on the last point, one of the things that stuck out to me is there are a few citizens in town who kind of are in their own shell, and they're not connected to the internet and stuff like that, so how do we reach them? They don't have an internet buddy, you know, they have a phone, so is there, you know, you didn't really address that, is there some way of them calling somebody, or how would you deal with that?
It'll be word of mouth, the idea is, once we find them, we'll connect one of us to them, and they can call us, and we'll be their internet buddy, so we don't, we certainly don't expect everybody to have access to the internet.
Okay.
Yeah, so that'll be part of the outreach, I think.
Yeah, and working with the senior group and stuff too, yeah, this sounds good, I mean, you know, I'm like you, I'm, it's exciting, but you're not sure exactly where it's going to go, so I certainly understand why you're not, you know, going, pursuing the 501(c)(3), you know, route, because you got to keep all the minutes, and have meetings, and have a board of directors, and that whole thing, so, I mean, you don't want to convolute it too much at the beginning, you want to keep it simple to get some momentum to get it going, it sounds like you're on the right track, so, thank you for bringing this forward to us, and hopefully we have lots of folks at, at home that are watching that can get excited about this, and seems like you have some team member here that volunteers, good to see Jim Scales here in the audience, and now that he's retired, has nothing to do, and wants to volunteer. All right, Jim.
Yeah, we want to keep it busy.
Yeah, very good, though, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to oral communications, number one, is there anybody wishes to, I don't have any slips, but anybody wish to talk to council about anything that is not on the agenda? Not seeing any hands, we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have items A, B, C, D, and E.
I'd like to remove A and C.
A and C, okay, and anybody else? Have motion for B, D, and E?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both. Okay, A, Ray, I know there was two changes that Sherry had made, so, one of them was on page two.
Okay, you want to go over those, Sherry?
On page two, unfortunately, I, under item B, red cross proclamation, it says Mayor Miller, it should be Mayor Conway, I bet you caught that one, and on the last page, it says that we adjourned at 12:07 PM, actually, I guess, again, unfortunately, it was 12:07 AM. Those are the two changes that were pointed out to me, you may have more.
You have any others, Ray?
I have one other, under old business, on page four, the last paragraph there, talking about lowering the maximum ridge line elevation of the roof line from 289 to 187, I don't think we're lowering it that much.
It's 287, yeah, a foot and a half.
Right. Yeah, that's just a typo, I'm sure.
Good catch. Okay, with those modifications, move approval? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, item C?
Yeah, the only reason I removed item C was to just follow up with the conversation that we already had, that it sounds to me as if the, the nature of the cosponsorship is still a little fluid at this point, and I just wanted to make it clear from the point of view of the council that we're looking into a number of things that we probably need to be more precise about, some things that'll come up in the conversation, and so, you know, the financial parts, the liability parts, you know, the waiver stuff, and all those things we've talked about, hopefully that, you know, we'll get a little more clarity on the specifics there, so that, I mean, I have no problem with the cosponsorship, I think it's really wonderful, but there are some questions that were still sort of left up in the air that I think we need to have addressed, so I thought it would be good to pass the motion, that the motion includes consider, further consideration of those concerns.
Is that your motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anybody disagree with that? Okay.
Let me get a little clarification on that, so, we're committing to the, the approximate thousand dollars sponsorship, as long as we're assured that it's in a way that is peripheral?
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. It's kind of like what we do with the seniors right now.
Right.
It's what we do with all our cosponsors.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I don't think David's had an opportunity to look at that policy yet, so I'm going to. We'll make the policy available for him to take a look at, and just make sure that we're clear in terms of any liability for the operation of a, well, it's not a nonprofit per se, but another group's operations.
Community group, yeah, right, okay.
Okay, so, do we have a second on Ray's motion?
I'll make the second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, very good, that's a consent calendar, move on to new business, and this is Consider Adoption of Ordinance Number 585, Adopting Regulations Pertaining to Massage Businesses in Brisbane.
Mayor and council, good evening, I wanted to introduce Ivan Delventhal, Ivan is a senior associate with our office, running Slode Holzman Sakai, and has been extremely helpful in working on a number of public agency issues, including the development of the massage ordinance, working together with Chief Macias of the Police Department and Commander Meisner, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ivan to present the staff report, and to answer any questions that the council or public might have with respect to the proposed massage ordinance.
Okay, Ivan?
Thank you, good evening, mayor and council members.
Is your microphone on?
Is it on now?
Yep.
Good evening, mayor and council members, thank you for your time tonight, I'm here this evening to give a brief overview of Ordinance Number 585 relating to massage regulations here in the city of Brisbane. Currently, there is no local massage law on the books, so what this ordinance is intended to do is give the city the authority that it has under state law to regulate in this area. A bit of background, and I won't belabor it, because it is laid out in the staff report, prior to 2009, there were no state regulations on the issue of massage, it was left up to local jurisdictions to hash out whatever permitting or other similar requirements they felt were appropriate in their jurisdiction. That changed in 2008 with the adoption of Senate Bill 731, which led to the implementation of Business and Professions Code, Section 4600. What this did was create a voluntary certification system, where persons who want to engage in massage could get a state certification, not mandatory, it's voluntary, and if they got that state certification, they had the right, under the state law, to practice anywhere in the state, without any other requirement for any local permit or authorization, or things of that sort. So on the plus side, a lot of people said that this created standards that were applicable across the industry, created more uniformity, among the downsides, though, is a provision of the law which essentially takes away the ability of local jurisdictions to regulate these certified massage professionals and businesses that employ exclusively such persons. So while in the past, cities could, could regulate these entities, it no longer has the ability to do that under the current law, except for in certain specific areas. So what our ordinance, the proposed ordinance intends to do is to give the city the extent of the authority that it has under, under the law to regulate in this area. The main parts of the proposed ordinance are, number one, it would require anyone wishing to practice massage here in the city to get the state certification, it would also require all massage establishments to employ only persons who are state certified, so everyone would have to be state certified, it would also establish a certificate of registration system, what this would mean is that if you wanted to be a sole proprietor, if you want to set up a massage business here in the city of Brisbane, or if you just want to practice massage in one of those establishments, you would have to apply to the police department to get a certificate of registration, and that could be denied if, for example, you lied in your application, or if you're not state certified, and it could also be revoked later on if, if you failed to abide by the city ordinance, and it would also, the ordinance would also implement certain health and sanitation standards, clean linens, things of that sort that a city is permitted to do under the state law. One final point, the current state law is scheduled to sunset on January 1st of 2015, there's currently committing, committee hearings in progress to determine whether the law will be extended, and if so, in what form, it's kind of a moving target at this point, but I can tell you that AB 1147, which is the main piece of legislation that the League of Cities is sponsoring, would actually restore quite a bit of, of local control to local jurisdictions, we don't know where the bill will end up, as we all know, the legislative process is very difficult to predict, but as it currently stands right now, it would give back some local control to, to local jurisdictions to use their land use and zoning powers, even relative to certified massage practitioners and certified massage businesses. So we will be monitoring that state legislation, and if this proposed ordinance is adopted, we may need to come back and do some tweaks based on what ends up getting adopted at the state level. So that concludes the staff report, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Council questions? Cliff, go ahead.
Thanks, Clark. Welcome, Ivan.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to get clarification, so you were saying that in regards to certification, the state doesn't require it, it's a volunteer type thing, but local jurisdictions can require it?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, so, so that's kind of like one of the main important reasons for the city having this type of ordinance, is so that anyone who was practicing massage would need to be certified?
Correct, so at the state level, there's two levels of certification currently, there's a certified massage therapist, which requires approximately 500 hours of training and education, and there's a certified massage practitioner, which is 250 hours of education and training. So yes, it allows the city to benefit from having, making sure that everyone in the city practicing massage has had a certain level of education and experience, and also has gone through the background check process that they would have to go through to get that state certification.
Okay, so, so right now, since we don't have this, this ordinance in place, a massage facility could have someone practicing massage, but not have been certified?
Correct.
Okay, and then, yeah, you know, I mean, that's pretty much it, I mean, I see where you're coming from, and it makes sense for us to adopt these, these steps that the state has, has laid out. All right, thank you.
Terry?
I had a couple questions, and I actually made a phone call today to someone who is a massage therapist, and just to get an idea of what her thoughts were on this, but on our regulation, we have a separate designation for someone who's doing this kind of work at a nail salon, or a beauty supply, beauty shop, where they can, hands, feet, scalp, neck are exempt, but it says nothing about shoulders, and I would be remiss if I said I got a head and neck massage and they didn't touch my shoulders, I would be quite upset that they didn't touch my shoulders. So why is it that we have, you know, that's the line in the sands, that you don't need to be professional or certified?
Right, you know, the exemptions, I think we certainly could, could look at and broaden if the council, that's the direction that the council wanted us to go in, this language is patterned off of other ordinances that we were provided by the League of Cities as sort of sample ordinances, the exemptions are among the things that sort of are out there, circulating, and other kind of model ordinances that have been put out, but you're right, I mean, there is an exemption for barbers and beauticians who, you know, who do massages of certain, you know, the neck, face, and or scalp, hands, and feet, so, provided those people are licensed, and under their, you know, their licensing, they're allowed to, to do the types of things that you're, that you're discussing, then I think that that could be something we could look at as building into this exemption.
Okay, and then, would this regulate, would this proposed ordinance affect current businesses here in town?
Yes, it would, it would typically give them a certain period of time within which to come into compliance, but yes, it would, no one would be, you know, grandfathered in, so to speak, it would apply across the board.
And have we discussed it with any of our... And have we discussed it with any of our local providers to see if this would be a burdensome ordinance on their establishments?
I have not, and I can't speak for the Police Department on that.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. No, we have not. I know that we do have the new massage parlor in the village, and I'm not aware of any other massage certificates or business licenses currently within the city.
Okay. So we'd also have issues with anyone who is a private massage therapist here in town that does... in theory, they would need to get a license, and then also get a police authorization, business license. They'd need to get their state certificate, a business license, and then some sort of permit from the Police Department to operate that kind of business here in town.
Need to work out of their home.
Yeah.
More specifically, you're talking about working out of their home?
Correct, work out of their home. And that seems, for most people, that's a fairly burdensome requirement for a small-run establishment. I understand that we wouldn't want to have houses of ill repute, or where other problems are happening here in town, but this seems like it's a very burdensome ordinance if we don't already have a problem.
Councilmember O'Connell, I think ultimately, it's, as we look at it, it's more for the protection of those individuals that are receiving a service, that these individuals be, have the proper training and certification in order to provide the service. So I completely understand where you're coming from, but I think, looking at it, it would, it would, it may provide, it might maybe burdensome for some individuals, but I do think ultimately, the goal is to make sure that the service provided is coming from somebody who's certified, who has the training and background, and has been background-checked in order to provide that service to residents or clients here in our community.
I mean, that's all I have for the moment.
Okay.
Till we hear from...
Lori? I know you submitted quite a bit on this.
Yeah, so I, as you all saw, I did have a number of questions, which our city attorney and his associate have answered most of them. My remaining questions are, you know, what other cities in San Mateo County are we aware that have these types of ordinances in place, and what cities did we use as models in drafting this ordinance?
So the primary model we used was Redwood City, in part because that was a model that was cited by the Massage Therapy Council as being sort of a model for other cities looking at the revocable registration system. And, you know, I can't cite which particular cities in San Mateo County have these. It's certainly something I can come back and, you know, give you the research on, but at some point, a month or so of my research, I was provided a list of cities by the Massage Therapy Council that were either in the progress, in the process of implementing these kinds of massage ordinances, or had already done so, and it was, the list was fairly long. So, and actually, I went to a presentation here in San Mateo County in Redwood City that was put on by the Massage Therapy Council. It was attended by a number of local jurisdictions, and it seemed that quite a few either had adopted these kinds of ordinances or were looking at adopting them.
Okay. And do we know if the existing business in town, the Green Spa, has the state certification already?
I don't know.
We do know that the only member that's currently providing a service is CAMT certified, yes.
Okay, so this would basically be for that business, the addition of the city requirements on top of that, which are the, namely, the city-issued certificate of registration and business license and associated fees?
Correct. They would, any other additional, employees that they employ would have to go through the same process that we're requiring in our ordinance.
Okay.
And I believe in San Mateo County, I think we are the only city that currently does not have a massage ordinance that's been adopted.
Oh, really? The only city in San Mateo County?
That I'm aware of, yes. And I know Bob, with a little bit of history, if I can go back, Honorable Mayor and Council Members, probably about, I think it maybe had been three or four years ago, Commander Meisner drafted a massage ordinance during the time that many massage parlors were opening in San Mateo County. As a result of them opening, some of them were resulting in some illegal activity, criminal activity, from prostitution to human trafficking. And the cities were encountering many problems in being able to use any enforcement measures because there were no ordinances in place. So as things started to evolve, Commander Meisner drafted an ordinance, and we did give it to our city attorney at the time, Hal Topol. Soon after he was handed the draft to review, he put in his retirement notice. And so we told him it wasn't urgent because we didn't have any massage parlors in our city, and we just wanted him to review it. Unbeknownst to us, it was going to be two to three years before he officially retired. So when David came on board, we went ahead and had him review it as well. And, you know, thanks to Ivan for all the work that he conducted in putting this together, but we were finding that in San Mateo County, many of the massage parlors that were having criminal activity were closing, were being shut down, and were opening up in neighboring cities. And I think at this, at this point, we find ourselves vulnerable to having these establishments coming into our community because we don't have an ordinance in place. So that's just a little bit of the background history on how kind of this all kind of came forward.
Right. And as to individuals opening up these businesses in their homes, would they currently be required to get a business license? Because I'm wondering, how would we even know that they're conducting this business?
So anybody doing business in the city needs to have a business license. So if you're conducting it out of your home, not only do you need a business license, you also need a home occupancy permit. And what we do is we provide that to the planning department for them to look at the zoning, to see if that type of home business is, that house is zoned for that type of business as well. So anybody who earns money within the city of Brisbane's limits needs a business license.
Also requires a fire inspection.
And also for a home, yes.
And it talks about, the ordinance talks about, you know, the fees being established at a later date. Do we have any idea of what we're estimating in terms of what we think a reasonable, or, you know, what a proposed fee would be at this point?
Well, I don't know an exact amount, but I can tell you that the way the current, the state law's currently drafted is we can only charge the equivalent of the lowest fee that we charge for a business license providing a professional service. So it would have to be tied into that, to that amount. I do know, just by way of comparison, that to get the state certification from CAMTC, it's $150 for a two-year certification. So we certainly wouldn't want to get near that number for our local requirements, because then it would seem that we are interfering with the state system of certifying these people and imposing ourselves in that system.
And has the CAMTC, you know, opposed any of these ordinances in other jurisdictions?
That's an excellent question. I have been in contact a little bit throughout this process with the CAMTC, and what they have told me as of a couple of months ago is that the revocable registration model that is in the proposed ordinance here, while they don't think it's totally compliant with the law, they're not challenging them, and they know of no other challenges, as long as the registration process is fairly straightforward. Again, this goes to the issue of, you know, the CAMTC views the state law as really giving them not exclusive jurisdiction in this area, but quite a bit of jurisdiction, and local agencies can't, when it comes to certified people, certified massage practitioners or therapists, the local jurisdictions are limited in what they can, in what additional hurdles they can put in place.
Okay. And one of my questions I'd asked previously in writing was, you know, the background checks, the fingerprinting is required of the applicant, which is, you know, up to, I guess, a 5% or more owner, but what about employees? What about the practitioners themselves who don't have that amount of an ownership interest? Would there be any requirement under this ordinance for them to get the background checked with fingerprints?
Well, indirectly, yes, because we would be requiring everyone to be state certified, and as part of the state certification process, they would have to go through a live scan fingerprinting process that would be done through the FBI and the DOJ as part of that process. We would, I don't think it would be permissible under the state law for us to subject them, again, to a second live scan, a background check at our level. What the ordinance does is allow us, for non-certified owners who own at least 5% of a business, to go ahead and do background checks on those individuals, non-certified owners who own at least 5% of a business. We can do background checks on those people. That's specifically permitted in the state laws, it's currently written.
Okay, right. But if they're already certified, then it's redundant, it wouldn't be necessary-
Correct.
...since they've already gotten the background check for the state requirements.
That's right.
That makes sense.
Lori, may I piggyback on it?
Sure.
You said non-certified, or certified owners, right? What about operators, you know, that work for the owner?
That's what I was asking.
Is that inclusive, too?
Yes, it does.
Oh, okay.
And if I could just note, the legislation that's currently pending to potentially extend this would create another certification for massage operators. So it would require, you know, a certain number of hours in massage business management, and then you could get a massage operator certificate. But again, that's just, that's not been adopted. That's one of the proposals that's being put out there as part of the state legislation that's in committee right now.
Okay. And then, the other question I had was, you know, I'd mentioned in my email that there's this SB 1193, it's the Senate bill that requires the posting of the 1-800 numbers for trafficking victims or people suspecting human trafficking to call to report it. And my understanding is that's only required for unlicensed, or I guess, massage therapists that don't have the state certification to post it. So I had asked, well, can we require that here through the ordinance? And I know about this because I actually participated in this community day a few weeks ago where we went out throughout the county and made sure that the establishments that were under the ordinance had to post these notices. So, and can you clarify your answer on that point?
Sure. Yes, as you know, Senate Bill 1193 requires certain designated locations or deployments to post a notice, where they post all other employment-related notices, talking about human trafficking and human slavery, and having a 1-800 number that people can call. Senate Bill 1193, at an earlier point, prior to the version that ended up getting adopted, did apply it to massage businesses and establishments. But through the legislative process, as you pointed out, that was changed so that the requirement, as it was ultimately passed, only applies to non-certified massage businesses. So only non-certified massage businesses would have to post that kind of a document. You know, the issue of whether we could require them as part of our certification process to post that, I think, could be problematic, because we would essentially be subjecting massage businesses to a requirement that doesn't apply uniformly to other professional service providers. And that's one of the big things behind this piece of legislation, is they wanted, the sponsors of the massage, state massage law, wanted massage businesses kind of treated like other professional service providers. And so to single them out and say, massage businesses have to post this notice, and not have that be a uniform requirement across the board, I think would be problematic.
Okay.
You know, if I can piggyback on where you're coming from, you know, when you have a business, you have to post your business license, you know, in an obvious place. Could you, could we require these facilities to post a copy of the certificate of these people? So at least, the people that are working there, their certificates are posted in an obvious place.
Yes, that's specifically allowed by the state law. They are, I believe, required to post in a conspicuous place the certificates of all the people working there.
Oh, because that's part of what this ordinance would be?
Yes.
Okay, that's in there.
And they also have an identification card as well. There's a certificate and an identification card that are issued to these persons, and they have to carry that on their person at all times, when they're performing massage.
So that's good, yeah. I mean, you know, when you talk about, I mean, people come in, they come out of the establishment, they'll see these people who are certified, and if someone is conducting some services and they're not on the wall, you know, then that could bring up suspicion and, you know, that can be investigated. All right, thank you, Lori.
Sure. Yeah, so those are all my questions. I think, you know, this is definitely a move in the right direction, and very thorough ordinance, and, you know, hopefully, you know, we don't have any issues that I'm aware of with any illicit, any of, you know, the massage therapies, therapists in town using them for any illicit purposes, using their businesses for those purposes, but, you know, hopefully, this will put some teeth into that and make sure that nothing ever happens in the future, so.
Okay. Ray?
I have some questions that came up while reading the text of the ordinance, which I'm sure you can answer, but it wasn't clear to me, so I just wanted your clarification.
Okay.
So the first, it doesn't have pages, so I'll go by the sections.
All right.
And the first is 810040, which is exemptions.
Okay.
And this came up before with Councilmember O'Connell, and it talks about an exempt class is barbers and beauticians. And my question is, are people who deal with nails, are they classified as beauticians, or are they some other category?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Because, you know, we have a nail salon in town, right? And they do give foot massages, so I'm trying to figure out, you know, where do they fit here?
Councilmember Miller, that's a very good question, actually. I remember from a couple of years ago, there was a big issue down in Palo Alto, because they passed a massage ordinance, and there was a place called Happy Feet, I think. And they gave only foot massages, and the question was whether they were subject to the ordinance or not. If, so you're talking about manicurists and pedicures?
Yeah.
They would, I, without doing a lot of research and seeing exactly what the definitions are, I think that a beautician would cover probably something like that. I don't know that they would need to get a separate massage license.
Maybe we should spell it out.
Yeah, well, from what I understood, beauticians, you know, they have to get a license, right?
Yes, they do.
But I don't think the nail people necessarily do, so that's where the problem is.
They do, they do.
Not the same kind of license.
Maybe not.
Well, it's different than a beautician, but it's...
It's a different license, yeah.
Yeah, I stand corrected. Apparently, a beautician is a different classification.
Yeah.
So if they have a beautician's license or a barber's license, then they're exempt. If they have a, if they're doing manicures and massages, then they probably are subject to the ordinance and would have to get a license.
So anyway.
But do you...
If we look into that and get an answer to it, so...
And do you want to exempt them, or do you not want to exempt them? I guess that's the second part of that question.
Well, you know, if they are licensed and they're doing things that are, it would be interesting to know what is, you know, the limitations of what they can do as specified in their own certification. in their, in their own certification. And if it say, okay, they can do foot massages, but that's it, you know, then clearly it seems like an exemption is appropriate. But if they, if that's not specified, then we'd have to sort of rethink whether it's appropriate or not, because I don't know that, you know, making them take this kind of, you know, the, either the massage practitioner or therapist doesn't seem appropriate for their particular field of endeavor at all. So, it's different.
Well, it seemed like that they would give foot massage, hair and, and massage a hand if they're doing, cutting nails. I don't know, maybe.
Sure, I mean, that, that's kind of part of it.
Maybe I could ask you, I know, you know.
I think Sherry and I are probably the most, probably the most experienced on this kind of practice, but, I mean.
Okay. I'm right about that, right? They do.
Yes, and, and again, while, if I'm getting a, a head massage, if they don't touch my shoulder, I'd be disappointed. If I'm getting a foot massage and they don't touch my calf, I am going to be disappointed. This is very limiting, and my concern is that we haven't necessarily reached out to the people who this would affect. We talked about doing a plastic bag ban, we've talked about doing polystyrene bans, and we've reached out to the people who were affected by that ordinance before we even considered it. And here, we're, haven't reached out to the people that are affected and found out truly what license their certificate. I know that the woman who, the man who cuts my hair and the woman who does my nails has a, you know, must be posted conspicuously, state of California license to do something next to their, their primary workstation, and it says it needs to be posted at their primary workstation or nearby. But I don't know what that license really entitles them to do. It makes a very big difference on a pedicure, if they, I know that they can't use a cutting instrument with that license. I have to go to the podiatrist if I want something cut on my foot, because they have limitations on what their license grants them authority to do with different instruments, depending on what level they have. And so, you know, I think that, I would like to know how many people we have with massage licenses, business licenses through the city, and I'm, I'm sure that's something in a record that we can find out, and what the typical fee for that is. Because I know that, the people that I know, not necessarily here in Brisbane, who do massage therapy, who are certified massage therapists, it is not something that they are a 24, 7, or 8 hours a day kind of business. So it, it's, it's not really, it could be a hardship, the fees that we imply, impose on them, to run a business out of here. But I'm not sure how many people we're talking about that it would affect. So I think that that's some research that we would want to know, people not working out of an establishment, people working out of their homes, how many we have with, with business licenses. And then also how this would affect the current businesses here and, and their ability to give you a decent pedicure.
Okay. So, Ray? Yeah. So I think that just needs to be investigated so we can get an answer for that.
Yeah, I would say, you know, yeah, I, I would say we could probably add manicurist to item B, and, and probably add shoulders in there, if it's okay.
In calves?
No, I mean, yeah, you know, I, I think, yeah, I, I think it's the spirit, and I guess, Chief, maybe you want to speak to that, you and Commander, it, I think it's the spirit of the law. So, I mean, it's really what we're looking at, right?
Yes, I, Mayor Conway, yes, I agree. And we could easily ask, add in their barbers, beauticians, manicurists, and that, I think that falls under giving you the, the feet massage for the pedicures and the hand massage for the manicures. And if, we can surely add shoulders and calves in there to make it complete, if, if that's what council's preference would be. I, I don't see that to be a problem.
If I can just jump in, the way it's currently worded, it says that.
That'd be okay if those things were added.
They can do whatever is within the scope of their, their licenses, presumably if they have a license as a.
That's what I thought you could.
A manicurist or a pedicurist, and.
Tell us what that is.
Whatever that is, they can, they can do. I guess if they're going beyond that, then there's a question of whether they, that they should be doing that. That's not information that we have at the tip of our.
Right.
Fingers, to use a manicurist term, but.
Or nails.
But we can, we can certainly take a look at that, and I, I know that the Public Safety Police Department would certainly like to get this implemented as, as soon as possible, just so that the, the city does have protections in, in place. But I think that, when's, when's our next meeting? Is that two weeks from now, or?
Well, it's, it's probably actually not until January.
Oh, January.
June 19th.
June 19th.
You don't think that we could just add those things to B and be good with that?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, certainly we can, but I mean, you want staff to kind of research it. I think what Ray's asked for more information, but also Terry's asking that we kind of do an outreach on, on the current, you know, establishment that we have, the nail, both nail shop and the massage business, and also individual massage therapists in town who have a, a current business license on file, right? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to see what the impacts are, because we've always been, as a city and a city council, I think we've always been very good at trying to get feedback on what we, when we're changing an ordinance or implementing a new ordinance, that we find out who, how it's going to impact the current businesses. And I think that's really important that we do.
I agree with that, that we want to get feedback, but I think at the same time that we want to make sure that we don't let this linger too much, you know, because the polystyrene ban hasn't yet actually been passed, it's still in outreach mode. So, I, you know, perhaps we can give them like a 30-day or whatever, you know, amount of time, period, to review and comment on the draft ordinance, and unless we hear from them, otherwise, we assume that it's acceptable. Something along those lines.
We have two establishments that are known establishments, to my knowledge. I don't think that it's something that it's going to be a major amount of research to find out how this would affect them. And I, I don't know how many private massage therapists we have in town. But I think that, you know, that, again, shouldn't be too difficult to see how many people have that kind of business license and reach out to them. I'm not saying it should be dragged out forever, but I think that this needs to be researched a little bit more.
Sure, Stuart knows that.
We have no, we have no massage therapists who admit to it in town. We have zero. We have no business licenses for massage therapists, other than for a green spa.
There isn't a place on visitation?
Used to be.
The chiropractic, but they're exempt from this.
Yeah, right.
And if I can jump in just for, for a minute, in terms of the, the impact, I mean, one of the, the issues is that because this, this was considered and developed as a, as a public safety ordinance, and in part, with the, the lengthy involvement, I know when, when this was being first legislated, that it went through many, many different iterations, with a lot of involvement by, by, by the city, by, by establishments, by the, the massage association. So I think that the goal was that by, by having sort of a set standard and, and model ordinance, that the issues in terms of, of impacts would be looked at really at a, at a much larger level, at, at a global level, sort of statewide. And the, the legislation that came out of that was a balancing between the interests of the establishments and the interest of the police departments and, and cities in, in acting something that would address the, the public safety concerns. So I think that, certainly if the council wants to, we can have a discussion with the, with the establishments. I think that you do need to be very careful, because this is not intended to be a negotiation with an establishment, and I think that if it becomes that, then it's just going to be very difficult to, to agree on something, and that the provisions, at least as currently enacted, are accepted by the massage establishment, a council as not onerous to the extent that they would limit the ability of someone to, to practice the, the art of massage.
And we only have, so, we're really just talking about one location, then, right? Just the green spa? I mean, I.
Two.
Actually, I just, I just looked on the website for the, what it's called, the department or the Board of Barbering and Cosmetology. So that does, it does appear that the bar, your, your license does, or the people who do foot massages and that type of thing do fall in that license. So the way this would read, they would be exempt.
Okay.
Their license through the state, through their, their barbering license.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So, when I first read that exemption part, the paragraph, section B, under 8.10.40, I, I read it to say that barbers and beauticians, that are licensed, can perform their services, except that if they provide services involving massaging the neck, face, and/or scalp hands or feet, that then this applies. So am I not reading this right? Can, can you, can you clarify what that except means?
I think it's saying that the exception applies to those kinds of massage, those areas. So if.
The exception applies, okay.
Like, if barbers and beauticians.
This provision, meaning the, okay.
Right.
I thought this provision meant this ordinance, this, okay. This exemption, maybe it should say this exemption. Because I read the opposite.
So I think we are down to just one establishment.
So then, and then if we're covered with the, the folks that do the, the pedicures and the, you know, those types of services, and we add the shoulders and the calves, I think we're covered. But I know, I know, you know, where you're coming from, Terry, about, you know, doing that outreach, but we just got one. And it seems like, you know, we really should move forward with this, rather than, you know, having, have staff do that research and then to come back and, and have another item on the agenda for us to discuss.
And keep in mind, this is a first reading, so it will come back to the second reading.
Okay, yeah, so.
We can answer, we can bring information back that you request tonight at the second reading.
Okay.
Okay. That was my presumption.
Okay.
Yeah. Ray, you're not finished?
Nope.
Okay, go.
You're right.
Yeah, you're still on the board.
So I'm, I'm still looking at the ordinance and things were, that were not clear to me. And I'm now going to go to 810050, the certification, the certification required. And this is something I also brought up with the city attorney earlier in the day, and you've mentioned it too, that there are really two certifications involved. And if you look at that first paragraph, and it appears in a number of other instances later on, that it says it's unlawful for a person to engage in, perform, blah, 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 unless that individual is a certified massage practitioner. And so my point was that it probably should be massage practitioner and/or therapist, right?
I think that point is, is well taken. We used certified massage practitioner in the definition section, we use that term to, to refer to both, but I admit that it could be more clear to just have it.
Just a practitioner slash therapist.
Therapist.
Right.
Throughout, that way it's just clear that.
It's clear that we're talking about either one of those certifications. Yeah, okay. So that shows up in a number of places.
Right.
And, but, and then, but there are one or two places in which you actually do have it, so, you know. It's inconsistent.
Definitely make it consistent.
Right. Okay, now I'm really jumping ahead here. This is under, applications for certificates of registration.
8.10.070.
That's 810070, and then I'm going to section seven, no, not seven, yes, 7M. And that has to do with malpractice insurance?
Right.
Okay, so I just have a question there. It, it's the $100,000 per massage practitioner slash therapist, with a maximum of $500,000. I guess my question is, so why the maximum?
I, I can try to answer that. I think it's most likely just a balancing of the, the likelihood of the need for coverage with the cost of, of a premium, that, it's like with, with auto insurance, the higher your, your maximum, the, the higher your premium is. So you've got a single incident and then a combined, and here it's $100,000 with a maximum of $500,000, which would be five times, I guess, five, five individuals.
We're not likely to face that, but.
I don't think we are.
It's serious as to, you know.
Yeah, so.
We don't even worry about it. So that's just my question.
I, I think that's referring to if they have five practitioners, they'd need $500,000 insurance.
Right.
If they had 15 people, they still only need the $500,000.
Correct.
That's what I understood, too. Right. And I guess we're never going to have any establishment with 15 certified massage therapists, but.
Don't say never.
Don't say never, oh, yeah, right, who knows, yeah. Somebody could rent police in the Crocker Park and open up a big massive place, you know, I guess.
Calistoga.
Can have a school.
Under B, under other required information, I'm still in the same section here, this comes down to the applicant for certificates of registration.
Okay.
And it says applicant is at least 18, and I guess you said before that 18 defines adulthood, well, you know, is that the way it is now, or, I always sort of thought 21 was adulthood, but, so what's the law on that?
Yeah, 18 is, is the minimum age set forth in the state law.
That is state law now.
Right. That's for, for, I don't, I mean, I can talk about the massage therapy law, I'm not sure if it's defined differently in, in other areas of law, but for purposes of massage therapy, 18 is the minimum age.
18 is the age, okay. Then if we go down to D1, where we're still talking about processing of application and investigation, it says investigation of, upon receipt of an application for a new massage establishment. Don't we want to say existing as well as new? Since we have an existing one.
Where, where? It's right there, the second, second line.
And I'm sorry, which, which, where are you?
Right here.
New existing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That, that sounds, that sounds correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Then I keep going, and goes E1, 2, and 3, and then 3A, B, and then here I have just the applicant, this is what, what the applicant's been convicted of, and if they're convicted of that, then there's no way. But number B1, it says the offense which requires registration pursuant to California Penal Code section, and it lists a million numbers, none of which do I have any clue about, but I suspect they all involve some kind of similar area of criminal activity.
Right.
What is that?
Well, 290 is the sex offender registration law.
Okay.
In California. I can tell you, for example, you know, 647B for prostitution, I think some of these other, I, I mean, I could defer to the police department, but I think they're all kind of sex-related or indecent, decency crimes, is that true?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, the 300 penal code sections are obscenity laws, such as child pornography laws.
Okay.
And lewd and lascivious acts. So those are all related. And then, again, the six are the, the 600s are the prostitution. And then, so they're all dealing with laws relating to either prostitution or obscenity laws.
That's what I suspected, but, you know, didn't say that, so it was just numbers, so I didn't really have any idea what that referred to, but that was my guess.
And then under the, the two, the double.
And then, under the, the two, the double Is, those are all the health and safety codes, those are all drug-related laws?
Yeah. And in that particular one, it does say, or the sale of controlled substances, which gave me some clue as to what the others meant. But, the first one doesn't have anything like that, it's all just numbers. Okay, that helps, thank you.
And, and being convicted of any of these ever would keep you from being able to get a license?
Well, let me talk to you first about what the state law says. State law says that there's a presumption that someone who's been convicted of this kind of crime is not eligible for a certification, and the burden is on them to show proof of rehabilitation. So, that would be the standard at the state level. Here, so, again, this is just applying to these five percent or more owners of a business, because we're already, we're already saying that everyone who wants to practice massage in the city would have to be state certified, would have to go through the background check at the state level, would have to successfully show rehabilitation if they had been convicted of any of these crimes. So, this is applying to persons owning five percent or more of a massage business, and not certified. And if they have been convicted of these things, that is a grounds for denial. I, I believe that there would be discretion in there if the city wanted to exercise it, where they could, you know, if someone had been convicted of something a number of years ago, and had been successfully rehabilitated, they potentially could issue the certificate to a five percent or more owner. So, that's, that's how it's currently worded.
And, and a follow-up comment, if somebody was denied, they would have the right to appeal that to the city manager and make their case as to why it should be granted.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right, so now, I'm on to eight, ten, one fifty, expiration and renewal, part B.
Okay.
And, again, these are all things that just weren't clear to me, and I thought it would be helpful to know what exactly is being stated. This is about renewal, and it, it says here, if you don't file a timely application, then you're required to, to file, you know, an application and, and pay a fee. Well, it would seem to me that the in-between step there, to make it clear, it should say, you know, you need to get a renewal. If you don't get a renewal in a timely fashion, you're not registered, and you have to stop functioning. And in order to keep going, you gotta get a renewal application, it's a three-step thing. It doesn't say anything about, if you don't renew, you gotta stop business. And, I mean, that's implied elsewhere, but I think it would be more clear if that were, if that, if this section had that component.
I don't, I don't see a problem with that. That sounds like a good idea.
Then, on the next page, it's, this is, now, this is under suspension and revocation. B, procedure for revocation or suspension of certificate or registration. This has to do with what the police chief does. And if the police chief believes as a ground for suspension, they give the written notice, tell him when the place of the hearing is. And so, it seems like something which is initiated, you know, by the police chief. And then, you get down to the last sentence, and it said, said notice shall also state that if no written request for a hearing is timely received, the applicant shall be deemed to have waived his or her right to a hearing. And the way I read that paragraph is that the hearing comes automatically with what the police chief does. So, it seems like a, to me, it reads like a contradiction.
So, if we revoke or suspend a certificate, we give the person notice of their right to have a hearing.
Right.
And we give them a specified time within which to request a hearing. And if they fail to request by a certain amount of time, then we are, they are presumed to have waived their right to have a hearing under-
Yeah, but it says here, the, the police chief shall give the holder of the certificate of registration written notice of the date, time, and place of the hearing. That's what it says. So, it's not really giving them a notice, it's telling them this is the hearing.
Right.
As I read it.
Yeah, but, that's a notice of the hearing.
Right.
Here's the hearing, and it's gonna be then.
But then, it says, for a hea, for a hearing, it's not, you know, that they didn't show up or anything, it's so-
Which section are you on, Councilmember Miller?
This is B, one.
B, one.
Procedure for revocation or suspension of certificate or registration.
So, so maybe it should read, if said notice shall also state that if no written request to the hearing is timely received-
Or something like that.
Yeah.
Now, it seems as if the hearing, the whole setup of the hearing is automatic.
It's a semantical thing.
Yeah, it's a semantical, yeah. All these things are mostly semantical, but, so, that would be clear if it's, if it's made known that it's not an automatic thing, you know, they get noticed that they're, they're gonna be suspended, and then, they have the right to a hearing. And if they don't respond to that, I mean, that would be the order of, logical order in my mind, anyway, but that's not the way the paragraph is written.
Yeah, but if it says to the hearing, this is says for a hearing, if you change those words around-
If you change it a little, then we can make it more logical.
Yeah, okay, all right. You, you see what he's talking about?
Right, yes, I, I do see, it's, it is confusing, because it looks like at the top of that paragraph, we're affirmatively telling them when the hearing's gonna take place.
Right.
And then, it sort of implies later on that they have the burden to request-
Right.
-that hearing be set, so I, I think we can clean that up.
Right, it's, it's just a, a language problem.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, I have just one more question. This is on eight, ten, one seventy, criminal penalty.
Okay.
And the statement is made, if someone violates any provision of this chapter, it shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. And I guess my only question is, I mean, even, what does violating any provision mean? I mean, there are some things that are pretty, you know, basic, like forgetting to turn in a renewal on time, or, or, you know, not sending to the right address, or, you know, something like that, is, is that a misdemeanor? Or, it, it's just not clear to me, what, what do you mean by any provision of this?
What says this, says this chapter, not this ordinance? What is a chapter?
No, it says any provision of this chapter, right.
So, what is a chapter? What?
That's under criminal penalty, eight, ten, one seventy.
Chapter eight, ten, right.
Chapter eight, that, so, it refers to just that?
What chapter?
Yeah.
We can add in the word material, so it's clear that it's something that's substantive, rather than-
Yeah.
-being two days late on your application.
Trivial stuff.
The chapter is eight, ten.
Yep.
The whole, the whole thing.
Yeah, the whole thing, that's what I'm thinking, too. But, there are a lot of trivial things in there that they could violate, you know, and that doesn't seem like you'd wanna call it a misdemeanor, so, that, that's my only point.
And I think we could also add, you know, the, something about the mandatory requirements of this chapter, so, you know, it's their option whether they wanna renew, maybe they wanna go out of business.
Right.
But, it would be the, kind of, the, the core elements, the mandatory elements of this. And also, there's, you know, there's discretion on the part of the police department as well-
Of course, of course.
-to decide, you know, what to, what to do about violations.
Okay, those are my questions. I just, I mean, I'm in favor of this, for sure, and I, but I, there were some things that were just not clear to me, and I felt my job to point that out.
Thank you.
That's good.
So, Ivan, the C A M T C is not an offshoot of the California Massage Therapy Association, right? This is something that was done to the legislature?
Yes, the California Massage Therapy Council is a nonprofit entity that was created to oversee this state, the state legislation calling for certi, that allows for the voluntary certification of massage therapists. Its board is made up mostly of people from the massage industry, there are a couple of appointments for, like, the League of Cities, the California State Association of Counties, and so forth, but it's heavily, currently, it's heavily composed of people from the massage industry. One of the things that would be changed, if the current bill goes through, is that it would be a majority of, of non-massage industry persons serving on the board, so it would be more people from local entities, law enforcement, things like that, they would compose a majority of the board if this current law gets adopted.
Yeah. Just, and this is, this is my opinion, but I think they kinda did a disservice by not adopting the California Massage Therapy Association rules and regulations, which, you know, of course, wasn't state law, but I think certified, reputable certified massage therapist had to apply for membership for the C M T A, California Massage Therapy Association, you had to have a minimum of one thousand hours, and you had to have continuing education. And none of this is part of this, they, I mean, they totally weakened it, because now they only allow or require two hundred and fifty hours for a massage ther, or massage practitioner, five hundred hours for a massage therapist. So, to me, they've really kinda taken, taken some legs out from under it, because the C M T A, I mean, is much like the A M T A, I mean, the American Medical Massage, or American Medical Association, all the associations where they require continuing education and stuff like that, that they've kinda opened a door to, you know, allow some things, you know, that, you know, while they tighten it up, but the, you know, it just kinda undermines the whole, whole process.
And, and those are very astute observations, Mayor, and things that are proposed to be tightened up in the successor bill, as it's currently drafted, would, which would require a certain amount of continuing education, which is not currently required, it would require a competency assessment of some kind, it would phase out the massage practitioner classification, that lower-level classification would be phased out, so it would just be Cal, it would just be massage therapists at that point. So, all these issues that you're identifying are issues that, among others, the League of Cities is trying to address in this current legislative cycle.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would be good, because I know with the C M T A, a number of years ago, they, their initial fee, just a annual fee, was like a two hundred and forty dollars, and, but that, by being part of the association, you know, I mean, you had to fill all those requirements and, and have proof of that, but also, you know, they, they provided the liability insurance, they had the big umbrella policy, so, I mean, it, it really, you know, seemed to me like the legislature should have really tapped into their resources, you know, to make that all connected, so now, it kinda, you know, undermines, you know, the, the higher level, I guess you can say, of massage therapy, so. And that's, that's my two cents, that's not, that didn't affect the ordinance, but, I mean, all good questions, you know, from my colleagues.
Yeah, I actually got a couple more-
Yeah, go ahead, Cliff.
If I may. So, Ivan, you know, when we were talking about having to display your certificate, and we talked about the photo ID, and going to the, the eight, ten, one hundred, under operating and requirements, section B, so, do the certificates have a photo of the person on the certificate?
The certificate itself, the, the last version that I saw, which was a couple of months ago, did not have a picture, but the ID card does.
Yeah.
And it's got, like, a, a barcode, so it can be scanned, and, you know, by law enforcement, and quickly checked.
Mm-hmm. But, the person just has to carry it, it has to be in their possession, but they don't have to present it. And so, then, what I'm, what I'm getting at is that, you know, someone could be giving you a massage, and, and their certificate is on the wall, but you, you really don't have any way to identify that that person that is giving you a massage is the person that's on that certificate?
Right, I mean, I think technically, as a consumer, you would have the right to demand to see that information, but you're right, I mean, there's, there's not anything on the certificate that would, that would link that person definitively without something further, like a photo.
Okay, and, and is there anything that we could require in our ordinance, where that, that photo ID is part of that certificate that's displayed?
Again, I, I think that, you know, we could run into, to problems if we try to impose additional rules, regulations, requirements that are specifically applicable to massage businesses that employ certified massage professionals. The state law is pretty clear in terms of what's required to be posted, what they're required to have on their person, and, so, going beyond that with certified persons might be problematic.
All right, it's more a legis, you know, state legislator, legislator, legislation type of thing, rather than a, a local thing at this time.
Right.
Okay. All right, yeah, and, and just, like, we've been talking about, like, the human trafficking, I mean, that's such a serious problem, you know, being able to try and make things more transparent, and, and, you know, just so that we can kind of identify when those things are being, or when those things are happening, it's, this seems like, you know, the more that we can do to not interfere with the business, but just to have more transparency with the consumer and the place of, of business, you know, to me, makes sense. And then, the, the last thing, I didn't see anything in here, and I apologize if I missed it, but, you know, acupuncture and acu, acupressure, so, where does that relate to kind of this ordinance?
There's not really addressed, I don't think.
You know, when I had, you know, when my back, you know, when my back went out, you know, one of the things I tried was acupuncture, and acupressure, and acupressure, you know, and they're working on, I mean, it's like a form of massage, I mean, they're doing your hands, they're doing your legs, and, so, but, you know, you're, they're just not putting a needle in you. But, they are-
Hitting all the points.
Yeah.
Is that considered a health facility? Because health facilities that are licensed are exempted.
Yeah, so, chiropractors are listed actually as being exempt under eight, ten, zero four zero A.
Okay.
All right.
So, to the extent that they are allowed under the licensing that applies to do massages, then this would allow, this wouldn't interfere with their ability to continue doing that. I don't know about the authority of acupuncturists and the like to perform massages as part of the services that they render, I, I just don't know that information.
Okay.
Offhand.
Yeah, I mean, the place that I, I had the, the acupuncture and the acupressure was just a place that that's what they do. It wasn't a chiropractor, it was just eastern medicine type of facility.
Okay.
All right.
Counsel's pleasure, I, I heard, I guess, city attorney did something that is ready to move forward, I, I've heard at least three people say that they wanna move it, move it forward to consider adoption, but I, there's a few changes that need to be massaged.
I, I think that with respect to a lot of the, the comments with respect to clarification, some of the wording changes, those can all be done as part of the, the, the second reading, and it'll, it'll be brought back, and, and that will all be, all be changed. The only, the only reason for bringing it back, again, before the second reading, would be if there was gonna be some significant substantive change to, to the ordinance, and I don't think I heard anything that we've talked about tonight that would require another, another hearing before we brought it back for the, for the second reading, I think we're gonna bring back some more information. Acupuncture is a good question, and I, frankly, I don't know the answer in terms of whether there's a separate licensing for acupuncturists, I know there, and if you're an M D or a chiropractor, you can certainly do acupuncture, and this wouldn't be, I mean, the massage ordinance would, would not apply to, to you as a licensed health practitioner. For those who are not, you're right, there's these eastern medicine facilities, and there's certainly a fair number that, that are in practice and provide the, the services, will check and can, can report back either by, by email or in-person. So, you have that information, but I think that we have enough to go forward with the, with the first reading, and then with the second reading, to make those changes that the council has talked about tonight.
Do you have any reason to pick otherwise?
Oh, yeah, I guess the, the only question would be the public outreach?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I think probably to, to address Terry's concern on that, then, and what your suggestion is, is that, is that we have one establishment- suggestion is, is that, is that we have one establishment, I guess, that, you know, this really applies to and that maybe the chief of police can, you know, take the new clean version for the second reading and said, by the way, this is what's gonna be applied, just wanna let you know that, and is that maybe not your idea of community outreach or business outreach, but I think taking the city attorney's advice that, you know, it's not a negotiation in a sense, but like this is what's gonna happen, just wanna make you aware of it, just to form a communicative point of view.
Well, could I make a suggestion on that? You know, I don't know that, you know, staff member needs to go and talk to anybody or anything, but, but I do think that, you know, we could, it's like you send notifications, we often do that, and not only would, would this potentially affect, at least so far as people are concerned, the one place that's, you know, dedicated primarily to offering massages, it also, it might raise a concern among those businesses that are actually exempt, but they don't necessarily know that. Like chiropractor, for instance, or, you know, the people in nail salon and, you know, and other kinds of places, you know, all the people who, you know, the, the beauty operators and so forth, you know, they may think, oh, my gosh, you know, how does this affect me? And so maybe we could think of some kind of written notification that, you know, the city's in the process of doing this and it only refers to such and so following state law and it, and such and such businesses are exempt, something to that effect. Would that make any sense?
Sure, I think we can talk about putting something on the, on the city's website describing what the ordinance is, is doing. One interesting thing is that it's not unusual when you have an ordinance on for the first reading and it, it's something where you have concerns from, from a business or from practitioners to have them come and, and speak at the meeting. I don't know how closely the businesses intend on following this, but I, I know that it, it was posted as it was appropriately supposed to have been and that there, there's, the fact that there's nobody here speaking against it is certainly significant in that it, it doesn't seem to be highly controversial within, within the community or with the, with the businesses. And I think that the idea of, again, putting it on the website, letting people know that it will be on for the second reading and that if they have questions, they can certainly come and, and express any concerns or, or questions would be a, a very good idea.
Terry?
I think it's good that it's gonna come back. I, I don't think that that answers or it really alleviates all of my concerns about the wording and things that are prohibited. I've had a lot of massages and I've had a lot of, and I would say that, you know, if you go by the actual rules that are in this paperwork, most of them have been illegal. None have ever been sexual. So if you really go and look at the letter of, and spelling out exactly what can be done and, and how things have to be done, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm sure some of them would be completely within these guidelines, but I would be, probably assume that some of them were not, and I've never been at an establishment that was dodgy or shady or anything. So.
And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong on, on this, and this chief is probably would be more complaint driven in a sense too, from.
Honorable Mayor, yes, but we wanna make sure that we get ahead of any problems that, that could occur.
Yeah.
And if we don't have an ordinance in play, I think it just opens the door for many other massage establishments to come into, into our city, and I, ultimately, we just wanna make sure that we protect our community and those that are receiving the service.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but, you know, at the same time, it's like, I'm not sure he can spell everything out in detail other than if we put in.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand that, and I think that.
I think that goes with the spirit, you know.
For me, I, I understand what, what we are trying to avoid and who we're trying to protect. I'm just thinking that a lot of this language goes a bit far on some of it, so.
No, we did add shoulders and calves to the section. I think we all agreed to that.
Yeah, I mean, the one caveat on that is I'd, I'd wanna check to make sure that that's.
Is your microphone on?
Person under their licenses, right? Ivan, is your microphone on? I beg your pardon. As far as adding the shoulders and calves, I would just wanna make sure that the beauticians or other persons under their licenses have authority to do that, because I don't wanna get in a position where we're appearing to grant them the right to do something that's not otherwise authorized under their license.
Right.
So we'd need to do a little bit more legwork on that if we wanted to change it from what it is.
Okay, now that makes sense.
Okay. Any other counsel questions? So entertain a motion.
So I'd be willing to, the motion is to introduce ordinance number five eighty-five, and with the understanding that there'll be a number of minor language and semantic improvements, and that, that we will also make an effort at some kind of notification of affected businesses.
A second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, we have four ayes and one abstention. Very good, all right, we're gonna move to item B. David, is, is Ivan in the doghouse or can he go?
He, he can.
You're welcome to stay if you want.
Thanks for the invitation, I think I.
Gotta get a pass, okay.
Thank you.
I, I told Ivan he might have a few questions, and the council certainly fulfilled my, my preparation of what might occur.
I mean, you're getting us figured out, huh?
Yeah, welcome to Brisbane, Ivan. Okay, very good, all right. Item B, which is consider directing staff to begin the proposition two eighteen process for setting a rate for capital improvements for the water and sewer system. Stuart, welcome back.
Thank you.
How was Half Moon Bay today?
It was interesting, I was having sewer issues there as well. It was just my day for sewer.
All right.
You know, wait for the, there we go. So it says April twenty-first, but that's because I haven't had a chance to update it to today. So back when the city council adopted its budget, the city council approved $5 million worth of projects for water and sewer. They were the Bay Shore Boulevard South, Eight Inch Forest Main Underground Relocation, a construction project, a Glen Park Pump Station Upgrade, a PRV construction and fire main on Anis, on the Anis line, and lots of letters, and the Anis pressure reducing valve, and then the SCADA system replacement, and Clark remembers this way better than I do what SCADA means.
At this point, I make my own stuff up.
Okay. I don't remember, but it's.
I thought Clay was the expert.
It's the, it's. It's the brains of the system. It's what makes sure that all the valves work when they're supposed to, and it's more electronic than doing it by hand. So the, the city council's subcommittee on facility, water and sewer facilities and facilities met, and then we talked about creating more of a long-term plan and how we're gonna fund, how the city is going to fund capital projects for water and sewer. And from a philosophical perspective, there's two ways to look at it. You could either pay for depreciation, which is that the current users pay for the portion of the pipes and the system that they use today at the price that was paid for when they were bought. So what happens is if you have a, a piece of equipment that will last twenty to thirty years and you depreciate it over the twenty or thirty years, you will have paid, you will have paid for it based on the purchase price, not on the price to replace it. So what will happen is at the time you come to replace it, you won't have enough reserves set aside. So that will be a challenge. Or you can pay for it as it's being used up by putting it into the rates of a bond, putting a bond issue, putting the cost of the bond issue into the rates, and then the users of that pipe in that time pay for it, and it's paid for at the price it was done. And then when you need to replace it, you look at doing another bond issue. So one of the thoughts is you create a twenty-year plan to look through your system, and we've looked at these kinds of issues, and say that we are going to create a method for funding over the next twenty years. And the way that we could fund it for the next twenty years is we say that we are going to sell bonds in increments, and we're gonna sell bonds in five-year increments to pay for five years' worth of capital, and then at the, at the, when you sell them for twenty years, and then when the twenty years is over for the first bond, you renew that bond for the new projects that you need to do. So you would have a capital rate already in place. So that was the conversation that was held at the city council meeting, and this is, seems to be one of the better ways to match the users of the system to the, what they charge. And I will say, I was just in Half Moon Bay, we're having the same exact conversation with the other sewer managers of Granada and Montero, and I said, geez, it looks kinda strange, your sewer authority never charges for depreciation, you don't expense it. And I said, well, nobody ever expenses it. So it's this kind of the method that we have been chosen as the practice, is to say, we're gonna bond for projects and we're gonna pay for those bonds through the current rates. And as I said at the last point, is the city doesn't have reserves for the current projects. So the question comes from what, how do we start planning for this? So if we need $5 million today for the projects, the four projects that has been approved, we're anticipating interest rates right around the 4.1 percent, we expect a term of twenty, we're gonna sell it for twenty years, and the annual cost will be about $400,000 to pay off this bond. So basically, what you're gonna have is $5 million worth of projects, and over the life of the bonds, you're going to pay about $8 million for, for these projects. In present value terms, if you say, you know, with the interest rate of 4.1, it's, that gets you to the $5 million. The question then comes is how do we set rates? And this was a very, a multiple meeting conversation, on how do you set rates to pay off these bonds? One of the normal ways that you can do it is you say that every, we're gonna charge, right now, we collect about $4 million on our, on our, on our water and sewer rates, you can say that we're gonna charge a 10% surcharge for our bond issue. The challenge with this is that we get more of our rates from high end, high users of water. The higher uses of our water pay a greater proportion of their rates. So if they were to reduce the amount of water that they used, then it would have a bigger impact on our ability to pay off these bonds. So what, we talked with the council subcommittee was that since this is a fixed cost of the system, we should have it be a fixed revenue source for the system. So we're assured that every year we can pay for the bonds. And as the point says, it becomes less dependent on your monthly fluctuations in water. During the recession, we saw a large drop in water usage, because the companies that were watering their lawns were not watering as often to ensure that they save money. If you have drought, you're gonna have the same issue. If we go and sell people, we need to do a 10% system-wide savings, chances are, you're not gonna be able to ask everybody in the system to save 10% of their water, because there's a number of people who are using bare minimum amount of water. So what we will probably do is ask the larger water users to reduce their water usage to equal that 10% number. If we've done, if we do that, we're gonna take in less money. And if we take in less money to pay for the bonds, it becomes more of a burden on the entire system. So the other issue that was out there was that lower users generate less of a burden on the system. If you're pulling four units of water every two months from the system, so four units of water, a unit of water is 748 gallons, so you're using 2,000, 3,000 gallons of water every two months, that's less of a burden on our system than if you were doing 500 units. In order to be able to ensure that we have proper pipe size for 500 units, it's got to be bigger than if you, everybody was just pulling four units. So there's an additional cost for the larger water users. So what the subcommittee talked about was creating a tiered system for funding, and then in order to create less fluctuation was to base it on spring water use. Spring water use as opposed to winter water use. So for our sewer system, what we do is we charge our, our sewer rates based on the amount of water somebody uses in the winter, because that's considered, and we talked about this previously in council meetings, is that's considered more of their indoor water use. When you start getting into the springtime, people start re-landscape, re-watering their lawns and using more outdoor water. So this way, we can set a rate for a year that everybody would know what they're paying. Our current rate structure, and I picked a large number of rates, as one, you know, one through twenty, and then I showed what forty units would be. You know, if you're use one unit of water, you're paying $91.54 every two months. If you're using forty units of water, you are using seven hun, you're paying $736.66 every two months. So we have a tiered rate structure. What the tiered rate structure does is encourage conservation of water. You know, my other hat, when I'm trying to pay for everything, I really would like people to use more water, but that's okay, we want to encourage conservation. So this would be what we're currently paying, $91 for somebody who's at the low end, 736 at somebody who's using 40, and I will tell you, 40 is not, is not the highest users. I mean, that's not really doing a lot of outdoor watering. Now, we looked at a number of different structures, and the one that the subcommittee landed on was to have a tiered system where if you use zero units of water, so you're not using any water, but we're still able to serve you, and we still expect to serve you. So if you use, if you go away for, you know, you close your house and you're away for a year, you can call us up and say, we're, you know, turn my water off. But at some point, we're gonna be still needing to size our system, replace our pipes in order to serve that house. So that's zero usage, and we would charge you, you know, $10 if you use zero. If you use forty, if you use one unit, it'd be 1250, so we increase it by $2.50 going through, and then as we get to higher and higher uses, we increase it at a different rate. The, the reason for this is we still wanted to give a benefit for those people who use less water. So if we were to try and come up with an, and I don't remember off the top of my head what it was, but if we came up with an average rate for users, it would be much higher than the $10, and this was a conversation, I think it came out to 228 dollars a year or something in that range.
Like thirty.
Thirty dollars a month.
Thirty, thirty-eight dollars a month.
Dollars, or a, a billing period. So that's what we were shooting, that's what we were trying to say, okay, if we're, we're gonna be paying 38 dollars, 38 dollars a billing period, people who use less water should pay less than that, people who use more water should pay more. And that gives an encouragement for people who use, to use less. And this is the rate structure that was developed, it would generate about $66,000 a billing period, which for the six billing periods creates the $400,000, dollar amount that would be needed. The next steps in the process, as we follow through on the two eighteen, would be we need to send a letter to all property owners. And when we talk about all property owners, that's according to Prop. two eighteen, because water and sewer rates are considered to go with the property, we go one step further and we send it to all renters as well, because a lot of times renters are the ones who are impacted by the increases in water and sewer rates. So we will send it to property owners and to, and to people who pay the water bill. And what we do is we pull the information on owners from the county's property, property tax records, we then cross it with our water users. Anybody who shows up on the property tax bill, who doesn't show up on the water bill will receive a letter, because there are. will receive a letter because they're a property owner. We would anticipate that this letter would be reviewed by the facility's subcommittee, Clark and Ray. We would then, after the letter is sent, have a 45-day waiting period before the item can be brought back to council. This gives people plenty of time to express their amazement that we came up with such a good idea on how to pay for this. Or to call in, have questions and complain about it. If there's less than a 50% protest at the day that the city council hears it, then the council can implement the rate. We anticipate that the rate would be implemented in January, and that we would sell bonds in that type of a timeframe. So that's what we're looking at. That's the reason we're doing it, is because we want to make sure we can pay for the capital projects that the city council has approved. We are doing it in a way that doesn't, that has the least impact that we can think of on the lower water users and have higher water users pay for a higher amount. The challenge always with water and sewer rates is you're not allowed to charge somebody for somebody else's use. You can't say that we're going to only charge commercial. We're not, we can't say we're only going to charge large water users, because everybody participates, and the state law says that you have to show a nexus between what your rate is and what it costs to serve that customer. So those were the, those were the confines that we were working within, and that's why we're proposing these types of rates. And then the next step would, we would bring a letter for Clark and Ray to look at before we sent it forward. We would then send it forward and schedule a city council meeting sometime 45 days after the letter was put in the mail. If there is any questions.
Council questions?
Lori?
So when the bills go out, would it be shown that this is a separate charge?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think people would, yeah, it would be helpful to be clear.
And that's.
Because when I read this at first, I, I saw the chart, and it was confusing. I thought maybe it was based on, that this was, that it was based on usage, or that this, I asked for, you know, from city staff, I said, well, what did we have previously? Can you add a column that shows the previous fees or rates? And then it became clear to me that this is on top of.
Correct.
That this is a fixed fee on top of the usage rates, which fluctuate based on, you know, usage, obviously.
Right.
And it wasn't clear to me when I read, when I read the chart. So I would suggest that we make it, you know, clear in the letter that this is a fixed fee, that it, you know, it's not based on the, the units of water used in a bi-monthly period like the, like the charges for water usage generally are. And you had said in the, in your presentation that the, the rate, you know, where they fall within this chart would be determined, did you say once a year, based in the spring?
Once a year, based on what we would consider spring water usage, which March, April, May, June? Yes. So we'd base it based on what they were using for the period of March, April, May, and June.
Okay.
That's two billing periods. We would average those two billing periods for the water use, and then for the next year, they would pay this amount. We would then rebase it the next year.
Okay. And we'll state in the letter that, that as well.
Yes.
Okay, good.
And that's very similar to what we do with our sewer charges. Our sewer chargers, sewer charges are based on what you use in November, December, January, February. We average that out for your water use, and then bill you for the year based on that. So it's a similar construct that we do for sewer charges.
Okay, okay. And then you had said in your presentation that if, at the city council meeting, that less than 50% of people protest it, then we can implement it?
Yeah.
How is that 50% determined?
It would be determined on the number of users. So we have about 1,800 and 1,900 users. So if you had 900 people showing up to protest it, or sending letters in to protest it.
Okay. Pretty high burden.
It is a very high burden. And the challenge is, is when you're talking about water and sewer rates, the challenge that you have as a council setting rates is you need to be able to pay for the maintenance and the repairs of your system. And the way we do this is through the rate structure. So if it was a very easy way to protest rates with a very small number, the challenge you would have is you may have a system that deteriorates and becomes an environmental hazard. I mean, remember, the purpose is always that we're trying to provide safe and clean drinking water for people, and to, as, you know, environmentally, remove wastewater from the system and not dump dirty, you know, wastewater into the bay. That's the purpose. And so if that's the purpose, and the way that we can do it is through the rates, if it was an easy challenge, if you only had 10% of the people needing to challenge it, so you would, you would end up with, is 90% of the people are willing to pay, 10% are not, the 10% would override the 90. You would then potentially get charged with fines and penalties, because if your system broke and you started dumping raw sewage that went into the bay, we would be fined. So that's why it's a higher, higher burden.
Thank you, that's all I have.
And it's not a, a water and sewer rates not being proposed to raise this year?
Right. We're not increasing our, our operation rates this year.
Cliff?
Yeah, so Stuart, we have the $5 million capital improvement projects, you know, for, for water and sewer service. And so this, this $5 million of projects, how do you see that being spent over a certain timeframe?
I think the goal for Randy's shop is to do it, you know, to do it as quickly as I can. My guess is that they will try and get all of this done in the next two to three years.
Okay. So this isn't something that, okay, yeah, we have these things that need to be fixed, and we could stretch it out over a 10-year.
No, these are the ones that Randy needs to have fixed in the next five. I could bring you back another list of projects that he would say would be needed to be done in five to 10 years, another list that needs to be done in 10 to 15, and then a fourth list, 15 to 20.
Okay.
And that's where we came up with a 20-year timeframe for the bonds.
That makes sense. I mean, the reason I bring it up is that, you know, I'm looking at, you know, do you need to have the $5 million bond over that, that amount of time? But it sounds like these things need to be done sooner than later. And so if you, I mean, I'm fine with the way that you guys have structured the tiered way to fund the, the yearly bond amount.
There's a lot of iterations on that.
But, yeah, no, it's very clever.
We were really happy to have an intern to work on that.
Yes.
But, you know, I'm just thinking like, okay, well, if these things were a longer-term timeframe, that you could, that you would do more of a fund, right? Instead of, instead of collecting this money to pay off a bond, you're collecting it to put it into a fund that then you would then take out to pay for these, these improvements that, that are needed.
Right.
But that isn't the case.
Now, I mean, we, we need, you know, these are projects, you know, I don't have my staff, I do have my staff report right in front of me, and I think I put in the projects, capital project sheets to explain all of them. And if you look at when we were thinking when they were going to be completed, the Glen Park Pump Station, we had hoped to have been completed in 2010. We had hoped the PRVs would have been done in 2009. We had hoped the SCADA would have been done in 2011, and we would have hoped that the Forest Main would have been done in 2009.
So we're on borrowed time right now?
We are.
Right.
I mean, these were projects that were approved years ago, but if you hear those, those dates, that was during the beginning of the Great Recession, that we did not want, that we were said, okay, how far, you know, let's put these off, because we don't want to do these kinds of rate increases while everybody else is having economic problems.
Sure.
So, yes.
Okay. Looks good to me. Thank you, guys.
I think we got a very good presentation, and that the subcommittee worked very hard on this, and I think all my questions really have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ray, you and I are the subcommittee. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, no. We did, as indicated, realize one, that we had a problem, and we worked diligently to come up with a solution that met the number of objectives which were not always harmonious. Sometimes they were in conflict, so that was kind of a balancing act. And I think we probably looked at about 25 different iterations of ways to do this. And it's wonderful what you can do with Excel, with somebody who knows how to use it. So we just tried out a whole number of things, and this is the proposal that's on the table tonight, is the best that we could think of to meet the, all the different objectives involved.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion.
Council's action is to move forward, and I guess that's by.
To begin the Prop. 218 process for setting a rate for capital improvement for the water and sewer system.
Okay. I have a second.
I'll second that.
Motion of second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Both?
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thanks, Stuart.
All right. Item C, consider authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with the city manager. You have a staff report?
Good evening, mayor and council. City manager Clay Holstein has been the city manager with the city of Brisbane since 1998. The employment agreement that is currently in effect was negotiated and signed between the city and the city manager Holstein in 2005, so it's now approximately nine years old. During the nine years, there have been three amendments to the agreement to make changes to a number of provisions related to salary, other employment conditions. And so the, the issue now is that there are a number of amendments that have changed the initial agreement from 2005. So at the suggestion of the council, there was an integration of all of those amendments and changes into a new agreement, so that rather than looking at the, the prior 2005 agreement and all the different amendments, you can now look just at the new and updated agreement. The agreement also updates the restoration of the 2% pay reduction that was taken by the city during the difficult economic period in 2008, 2009, and provides for a COLA increase, which is consistent with that of other cities and other city manager agreements in the area. So again, the intent was to integrate the, the changes, to remove provisions that were no longer relevant, update the loan information, and to include the current salary information so that you're starting now with a new contract, new agreement in 2014 that will be current with all the conditions of city manager Holstein's employment. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council questions?
Aye.
Terry?
Nope.
Everybody?
Well.
Ray?
Just one thing I mentioned to staff earlier, just in case somebody actually reads the staff report. There was a typo that could be confusing on the first page, when it's background in the staff report. There's a number of items that have been, in the contract have been modified of what you were just explaining. And then it says, the city manager council requested that this, everything be incorporated into one consolid. Well, that was really the city council, not the, not the city manager. So including manager there is just a typo.
Thanks for catching that, and that was a typo, and it should reflect that it was the, the city council that made that request.
So to entertain a motion?
I would, yeah. Go ahead. All right. So I make a motion to recommend that the city council approve the 2014 city manager employment agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the employment agreement.
Second? Motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? All right, very good. Welcome back, Clay. Okay, staff report, city manager's report on upcoming activities?
I just have three items to report on. Your actual next meeting will be on Monday night, 12:00, and that will be the budget overview presentation. Also, put out last week in a weekly report to you, but just so we can put it out tonight to whoever might be watching.
Is your microphone on?
It is on.
Oh.
Okay. I'll talk louder.
Okay.
The community pool will be closed for the week of June 16th to the 20th to do some significant maintenance work in the showers and some of the other areas in the inside part of the pool. And we will be open for regular summer hours starting June 23rd. And then finally, as you recall, last year in the budget, you approved new positions called the public service aides. These are part-time positions that will be in the community park on weekends, and that will be commencing this Saturday and Sunday. And they will be there for seven hours a day on both days throughout the summer.
Okay, very good. Mayor, council matters, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports, health and safety subcommittee. Is that Ray, that's you and Lori, I believe?
Yes.
Did you meet?
I would, you know, we reported on our meeting, but subsequent to that meeting, I was going to ask Lori if she wanted to report on a, on a follow-up to that meeting, which she initiated.
Sure. Yeah, I was actually going to do that. So following the meeting where we had, we had talked at that initial health and safety subcommittee meeting about how to improve the safety at the community park to deal with issues of interface between dogs and children, and children wandering out of the playground. And one of the ideas I had proposed at that meeting was whether we wanted to put a fence around the playground area. Well, after the meeting, I sent an email to the Mothers of Brisbane, got lots of great feedback. Most people, most people did not like the idea of a fence. They didn't think it was in keeping with our community, and just the layout was, was not good for a fence. But they did have a number of good suggestions, namely to put a gate either at the entrance of Old County Road, behind bathrooms, or to put a gate, to put gates on both sides of the bathrooms to prevent kids from wandering behind and going out onto Old County Road. Also, some ideas were to put some signage, better pedestrian crossing signage on Old County Road between the, where the, you know, where the bathroom, the path leads from the bathroom to the shopping center, and also when you go around the curve to get to the skate park. So, and there were a couple of other ideas as well. And so I wrote them all down, I sent the list to our city manager, and we're going to hopefully discuss it at our, at our next subcommittee meeting. And then there were also some suggestions about, or concerns about pedestrians, children walking outside the Brisbane Inn, and potentially being solicited by illicit activity that's going, that may be going on out there. And so that was raised, I raised that as well with, with our city manager, and I believe our police chief is working on that issue. Is there anything else that I missed?
That's it.
Okay. So, yeah.
Okay. Bayland Subcommittee, that's Ray and Cliff, right?
Mm-hmm. We've been meeting a lot. But let me just report on one aspect, and let's see if Cliff wants to add to that. One of the things we are trying to get up and running is the survey. And so we've been meeting with the principals of the survey company, and we're first talking about having the focus groups to get a sense of the people out there who are not necessarily all that connected to all the information that's flowing around, so we know the kinds of things that would be appropriate to ask people, and also the kind of education we need to engage in in the process of administering the survey. And so we've been meeting a couple of times, and we're going to meet again this Friday, and we'll, we'll have a proposal as to what kinds of questions should be asked of the focus groups and. And we're thinking that there would be two of them and they would be chosen at random from groups of voters who are not actively involved in the community so that we get a sense of the people who are not really that connected to all the central communication networks. Because what we want to find out is what, what do people know and what they don't know. And that's kind of the first effort that we'll be engaging in. And then, subsequent to that, the, the holding of the focus groups, then, then we'll start thinking about, okay, so, you know, what, what kinds of questions should be in the questionnaire? And then we'll have to develop a process of vetting that and we haven't got that far yet, but we're working on it and that's, of course, something that when we have a proposal, we'll obviously bring that to you all.
Sounds good to me.
Anything to add, Cliff?
No, no, no. Ray said pretty much, uh...
Okay.
What we've been doing.
Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, I...
Can I make one comment on that report?
Oh, yeah.
And I just want to say that reaching out to the uninformed or the under-informed is going to be difficult. It's sort of a, um, very difficult thing to actually reach the people who are not hooked in instead of the other way around. So...
Well, that's the initial one. Just may not get much feedback, that's all.
Well, you know, it's also, you know, just the folks that, that they might be hooked in, but we don't know that they're hooked in. Right. They, they don't show up to meetings, you know, they don't make their phone calls, right?
The lurkers, the people that are watching.
They're not responding to Brisbane, you know, they're just kind of doing their thing, but they, but they're still absorbing information and so...
The silent ones.
Any care.
They're, they're silent.
We want to hear, yeah, exactly.
Opinions are silent, okay. Okay. Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, this is regarding the skate park and Ray, this is you and I. And if you want to update, go ahead.
I guess the only additional thing to report is that, um, we have, we mentioned last time, I think, that we have four responses to the RFP from design companies. And we looked then briefly at our meeting, uh, a week or so ago. And we're gonna be having a meeting this Thursday at which...
Not this Thursday?
Yeah, isn't it this Thursday? Am I right? I think so. Um...
I don't have it on my calendar.
I think it's supposed to be this Thursday, at which we, we better check. I thought it was this Thursday. Anyway, the idea is that we have a scoring system for the design proposals and that the sub, the two subcommittees, then you know, the Park and Rec Subcommittee and our subcommittee plus the staff, and then we agreed to include one member of the public, and that's Michael Barnes, in the, in the scoring process. And then we also asked the senior engineer who's helping us, Karen Kinzer, to, to look at the proposals and see, okay, so, they're quite a bit different in the amounts that they are bidding. And so, the question became, so, why are they so different? And so, we thought maybe there was some difference in the kind of engineering services they were proposing or maybe in the community outreach or whatever. And so, we asked her to make an analysis of that, which she has done. And so, then we will be considering all of that at our next meeting and we'll get a confirmation as to when that is. But I thought it was this Thursday, so we can, we can double-check that.
Yeah, I thought it was next Thursday and not just coming Thursday. Okay, economic development, Lori and Cliff, let's go on that. You guys are both smiling.
Well, I guess most recently, Cliff and Clay and I met last week to talk a little bit more about what a potential economic development person, either in the city or through the chamber, would do, what that job description would look like. And Cliff did a great job of taking a first step at drafting a job description and, and Clay added to that. And so, now, um, you know, we're still, we're still working on, you know, what that would look like so that we could, you know, basically present to the council, you know, here's what that person would be doing. And we're looking at other, other models of what other cities have done. Um, we looked at other cities, you know, what their job descriptions when they're looking, when they're doing job searches, what, what those look like and what the salary ranges are as well. So, hopefully in our budget discussions next week, we'll be able to put in an amount that we would think would, would be good for staffing that position.
Perfect.
The only thing I would add to that was that we, no, I'm sorry. The only thing I would add to that is I don't, I think there was a couple, about three different models we were looking at for potentially providing resources to this. One was a city staff person, one was somebody through the chamber, and then the third was a, a contract to the city, but not a city employee.
Right.
So, there's, there's different models that we're looking at and the committee is, the subcommittee is going to have further discussions about that before they make a recommendation to the council.
Right, but in the meantime, we thought it would be a good idea while the budget discussions are upcoming that, you know, even if we haven't decided on what model, we would recommend that at least we can, you know, hopefully put a placeholder in the budget.
Okay. All right, very good. Um, next item is discussion of Assembly Bill two-six-five-seven. And Terry, you have this to be put on?
Um, this, this came to my attention through, um, through the internet and it is a state, um, bill that is coming through the assembly to ban certain rodenticides in environmentally sensitive areas. And San Brito Mountain State and County Park would be one of those areas that would be affected by this bill. And I thought that it, um, was something that was in keeping with some of the items that have come through the Open Space and Ecology Sys-, uh, Commission, Committee, and that I would like the city of Brisbane or the council to send support for approval of this bill.
To take a position?
To take a position, yes.
To support it. Now, it looks like it went to the Assembly, uh, third reading today. So, I don't know. We don't know what the status of that was.
I have not heard.
Okay. Counsel agree? I mean, David, this is something we would have to bring back to, in order to take a position on? Or could we, if wanted to right now, could we?
If, if this is consistent with other positions that you've taken in the past, you could probably give direction right now without bringing it back again.
Okay. Counsel's pleasure?
Hey, you know, if I, if I'm any serious, um, so it says that, the, in that, in the, I guess, the third paragraph, it says this bill would prohibit the use of any poison substance or product other than its use as a prescription drug under the direction of a licensed physician and surgeon. So, I mean, I'm trying to make that connection between the mountain and this thing.
What they're saying is that you can't, they don't want it used in the environment for any, um, that would damage endangered species, but if your doctor prescribes it for you, then you can take it.
So, is this like, you know, like, I know there's like a huge problem with prescription drugs getting into the waterways and then, and then, um...
I believe that, I believe from what I've read, is that it's to keep the, this specific anticoagulant from being used unless for purposes other than immediate health concerns by a physician.
This is some of the stuff that, and I'm not sure, but it's probably in rodent poison?
Yes, it is rodenticide.
Okay, so this is what you're talking, okay, all right.
Yeah, it's a rodenticide.
And so, what it basically, how it, um, if I understand how it works, it, uh, it, um, causes the liver to start bleeding and it doesn't allow it to coagulate and so it slowly bleed to death?
And that's really cruel, yeah.
Well, the...
And it doesn't have, uh, you know...
And I guess the...
Whoever eats it is gonna suffer a little while.
Well, I don't know. There's debates on that.
From the parks, from the Open Space Ecology, what the bigger issue is that a lot of these rodenticides have be- what, they don't, the original rodenticides did not kill rats in their first go-around and they would come back and eat more and then finally die. And that, and they had just enough in their system to kill them. With the new, um, rodenticides, they have a higher level, but they don't die right away because they bleed to death. So, they'll come back and eat it again and again and again. So, where, in the old time, it took a while for it to happen. In the new one, one dose will kill them, but they will have multiple doses in them. So, what will happen is if this rat who has died from this rodenticide now has enough poison in it that if a bird finds it, the bird would die, or if a cat finds it, the cat would die. Because it would have enough poison in that to kill that. So, that's really the reason why it becomes very dangerous for it to be in wildland areas, these newer style rodenticides.
Yeah. I know, I, I support it.
And we spent a lot of time in open space and I don't remember, Ray, if you were on it at the time or not when we were talking about it.
And it, it, it appears to really be targeting areas, fish and game use in areas with threatened species. And, and that's really what we have is a, is a threatened habitat, so...
And what would be the alternative, I guess, to not using this? Is there one?
It's a question.
Sorry.
And do they, I, I don't know how it's administered. Is this something that, like, is it for sale in our hardware store? Or, you know, because this probably is the use of, but not the sale of, a rodenticide. So, do we know if this is carried in our local hardware store?
So, based on previous research, the Open Space Ecology Committee did, Billy doesn't carry this. He will order it for people if they would like it, but he doesn't carry it. The other issue is a lot of the warehouses in town, when they hire professional exterminators, may be using it. But it's not, you know, there's other ways that you deal with, you know, a mouse or a single rat around your house than this. This is very effective, but there's, you know, there's other types of rodenticides that are not, that don't supersaturate the body. And then, of course, there's some of the catch and release, some of the catch and kill kinds of traps and all those things. So, there's a lot of alternatives to this, but what this does is when you have it interfacing with wildlife, you get some issues. The other problem, that when you have this in your house, you know, if you have little children, they're little blue pellets. So, I mean, you know, from that perspective, even, you know, having something like this in your house is not the best method that you can use.
And, and from what I've read of the bill, and I haven't read the, everything related to it, but this is banning the use in the environmentally sensitive areas. It's not saying household or commercial use, it's in the environmentally sensitive areas.
Yeah.
Does that include people's homes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not unless you've got, uh...
It defines what that is.
Or...
Yeah, it defines what that is on the second page.
Yes, it does.
And is this rodenticide, the, the poisons, is that limited to the rodenticides? Or would it include like, you know, other exterminator, things like, like ant traps?
It's the two anticoagulants.
Okay.
And they've, they've, or actually, there's four.
There are four of them.
Okay. Because I know a number of people at the ridge, myself included, we have like an issue with ants and a lot of people come and have it, you know, ant exterminator spray the outside of their houses. And some try to find, you know, environmentally friendly sprays, but do we really know what's inside them? So, but this is limited to rodent poison?
It's an anticoagulant rodenticide.
And it's defining what the environmentally sensitive areas are.
Yes, with threatened species, threatened or endangered species.
Right.
Okay, so I guess a way to do this, if the council's supportive of it, and I'm hearing...
I'm supportive of it.
Yeah, that, um, David, the way to do this is maybe a letter, um, from the mayor? Is that, is that the way to do it? Yeah, okay.
To the appropriate legislators?
Yeah. Do we need to do a motion or, I think, consensus? Okay. So, staff can draft a letter and then we'll sign it and...
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Item B, written communications and Ray, this is, uh...
Yeah, I just wanted to bring one to everybody's attention and all of us received a very long and thoughtful letter from Clara Johnson expressing her concerns about the sale of the part of the abandoned rail lines to the bakery in the Crocker Park. And, uh, since she did spend so much time and a lot of research, obviously, I thought it would be appropriate to at least give her my personal reasons for why I voted for it and process responding to a lot of her concerns. So, what you have here is then her original letter, which was sent to all the council. The point of written communications is to make that public. And then, um, the only appropriate way for my letter to go into the record is to do it at a public meeting, which is what I'm doing right now.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, that was a good response.
Thanks for doing that. I've kind of scanned it as we've been going over it, so...
Yeah, I, when, when did this?
She sent it via email.
Yeah.
Yeah, to all of us.
I, I had replied to Clara and asked her if she wanted to talk about it, but she hasn't responded, so...
Okay.
I didn't see it.
Oh, okay. Item C, review updated city council schedule for two thousand fourteen. And Sherry gave us a corrected schedule, I guess, of special meetings, so, um, okay. It's like the only thing here is, um, June fifth is tentative. If needed, Mets would be a regular meeting?
It'd be a regular meeting, yeah.
Regular scheduled meeting, right?
Given your budget schedule, I'm working to try to see if we can not do that meeting.
Okay.
But I would point out that we did not, we do not have the fir-, what would have been the first meeting of September is there's a conflict with the League of California Cities Convention during that week. So, the way the schedule right, reads right now is you'll have a single meeting in July, August, September, and then get back to your regular schedule in October.
Okay.
So, but you raised the question last time about your ability to present on August twenty-first?
Right.
So, did we want to deal with that now or wait till later? Or what's your recommendation?
Um, I, I think we can wait until later. I mean, I won't be, I definitely know I won't be available. Let me kind of see how we can deal with that on a staff level and then, and then, you know, as the summer moves on, we can figure, try to figure that out.
Okay. Yeah, and I won't be here either, but if, uh, you want to move it to the twenty-eighth, I'll be back.
I won't be.
Not, I'm okay with that. Okay. Jeez. Oral communications, number two. We don't have anybody here. Let's wait, I, I don't, I don't want to get out early. We have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yes.
You second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. All right.